Good evening, the time is 6:30 and I would like to call this regular session of Chardon City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Tuhah?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Lolko?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Move on to approval of minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the January 8th, 2026 regular session minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Movement second, and further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuhah?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lolko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Move on to managers' report, good evening Ben.
Good evening Mayor and Council. Start with manager's office and city hall, staffing, the city is still seeking some seasonal positions in our Parks and Rec Department, including camp counselors, lifeguards, and summer program administrators, interested applicants are encouraged to apply, cityofchardinohio.gov/jobs. The city has acquired a new software called Bid Express, which is an electronic bidding platform, and we were fortunate to get it on state contract for zero dollars and zero cents, which is always the best price for anything for the city. So this will help us advertise and receive competitive solicitations more efficiently, and it will distribute bid packets and allow electronic submission of sealed bids, where currently companies still have to mail us sealed bids.
Clarify that just for a second, that also includes our infrastructure projects?
Correct.
People were mailing bids in for those? I don't think so.
No, or bringing them in.
They're bringing them in, yeah. So what do you do when you have to do a bid addendum or?
The system, up until pretty much the deadline to open, will let you upload a new version.
And the bid tabulation, Doug, is that that's not going to be done by the city engineer?
It's generated by the software, but I'll make sure it's checked and formatted properly.
Right, and a professional engineer should be basically signing off on the accuracy of the bids.
Yes, correct.
What it does for the tabulation is essentially take all the lines from all the bids and line them up with each other, similar to the chart we provided for the trash bids of, put them all next to each other to make it easy to compare.
Yeah, same thing happens with a spreadsheet. I'm just used to doing it for thirty years, the old school way with Excel spreadsheets.
So is Doug.
Worked out great, but, okay, got it for free, so I can't complain about that.
Work has begun on the city's 2025 annual report, I've given departments until March 15th to submit their documents to me, and then I hope to have the final report to council for your April meeting. And then I want to make you all aware of an electric rebate, so the city is part of our aggregation partner, NOPEC, and they have successfully negotiated a settlement that was approved by PUCO, and so our residents will receive an estimated sixty-five dollars and sixty-one cents rebate on average, as part of that settlement with First Energy over House Bill 6. Moving on to capital projects, as it's February of a new year, tis the season, the North and Fifth Street Signal bid will be, should have been advertised earlier this week?
Yes, it was.
Was advertised, and opening scheduled for 2/25 for you all to award at your March meeting. The 2026 street and sidewalk programs, the selected streets were reviewed by the Service Committee, as I'm sure they'll report on tonight, currently scheduled to have bid advertisement on March 10th and bid opening on March 25th. The pocket park design was reviewed by Planning Commission at their January meeting and is on your council's agenda this evening for your approval. The pickleball courts with the school, the agreement has been fully executed, the school district is now moving forward with design and construction process, they will need to submit plans to Planning Commission. 2026 vehicle replacements, process for quoting vehicles and ordering has begun, we are still dealing with some backlog on certain vehicles, for example, one of Chief's police cruisers from 25 just arrived in early 26. North Street resurfacing, stage two plans were submitted to ODOT on 2/26, ODOT will be bidding that project for us, and they plan to do so in October of 2026. And then for our citywide traffic signal upgrade, stage three plans were submitted to ODOT on January 12th, ODOT will also be bidding that for us, they plan to bid it in September of 2026. And then a shout out to Director Chekai, he successfully navigated the city's request for an additional fifteen percent funding from NOACA, it was recommended by the Financial Advisor Committee and is just awaiting final board approval in March, which is a little over another hundred thousand dollars for the project. From our departments, Parks and Recreation, the summer, spring-summer program brochure has been published and registration opens on March 1st. From Public Service, the city has received notification from the state of Ohio, again, from the state of Ohio, not from the city, that they will be paving all of State Route 44 from the North Corporation Line to the county line over the course of this summer. So unfortunately, the orange cones on 44 will continue for another year. Again, this project is not within city limits, but we do want our residents to be aware of the potential disruption. Fire EMS, the new ladder truck has been ordered and paid for, expected delivery is not for thirty-six to thirty-eight, thirty-eight months from now, Chief Geis will probably touch on that in his report this evening. County courts, county court personnel began moving into their new building on February 2nd, and the county is working on scheduling a grand opening event when it's nicer outside for the public to gather and cut a ribbon outside. The county has also begun working on their additional parking areas, and there may be a request coming to council in March, related to that. Couple other things that have come up since I wrote this, it is officially an above-average snowfall year, the last time we had an above-average snowfall year was 2017, a little over a decade ago. Director Rogers of our Parks and Rec Department passed his certified Parks and Recreation Professional Exam on February 6, 2026, congratulations Adam.
Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you.
There were some minor voting changes to the voting wards and precincts within the city, passed by the Board of Elections, if residents are affected, they will receive a postcard in the mail from the Board of Elections, no residents polling places will be changing as a result of the change, just the precinct they're in. Municipal road funds, we did receive formal final notification from the county that we will not be receiving the municipal road funds be requested for 2025. Long story short, there was an issue, the county didn't appropriate the money in time to expend it. Mark and I are working with the county to try and reallocate that money to one of our two eligible projects in 26, either North Street repaving or our regular street paving program, in order to still get the funding from the county.
So you're referring to what has been in the press?
Correct.
That people are reading though?
So are you saying we're hoping they will get that money just a year late?
Correct.
So the end result is not a loss to the city, it's just a timing issue?
Correct, and we were fortunate that because we've been saving up for particularly the Wilson Mills Project in 2028, we had enough money in our reserves at the moment to cover it for 25, and as long as we are reimbursed before 2028, we shouldn't experience a shortfall.
And this will not affect any future years allocations, this is just a re-timing of 2025.
Correct. That's my report.
I have a couple questions. When do you anticipate, Doug, street resurfacing, time-wise?
2027, spring.
Okay. And Adam, has the manager mentioned the summer brochure and the programs on the city's website, how else has word gotten out?
Email blast, so our youth softball league actually, registration starts a little early because their season starts a little early, we email blasted all of them, Becky's posted on social media, I posted on social media, I'm not sure if she hit the signboard with it, but it's her intent to hit, put it on the signboard, so all the standard ways we normally do it, here soon, I will try to get some PDFs displayed on the schools website.
So no paper copies go anywhere?
No, we've only done that one year, and that was my first year here, and we haven't done it since.
Before I fully yield my time, Director Chekai asked if he could have a moment to add something of his own to report.
I did have a nice list for council of updates from the Service Department, but Ben told me to keep it short for this meeting, so I will do that. I just wanted to recognize our superintendents who are here this evening, should there be any discussion on the budget, most of you know Mike Butt, Leroy Dowling, and Frank Taylor, they have done an exceptional job this winter, we've had a lot of water breaks, obviously snow plowing, and keeping everything running, so I just wanted to give a shout out to those folks, and thank them for their efforts.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, thank you. I would say too that I, four or five of the guys were out on right by my house last Sunday, and they had a really great attitude, I was super impressed, everybody was like, you know, it was, they were all like, you know, just making the best of it, so I just wanted to say that, I was, you know, impressed by, and they were working fast and keeping the homeowners in communication, so that was really very good customer service.
We have a good group of guys, and they represent the city well.
Do you have a water break, Ken? Do you have a water break?
My neighbors, a couple of my neighbors had frozen pipes, and it was, you know, but they were all out there, and it, I was just really impressed with how, you know, just overall how they were handling everything, so thank you for that.
Justin, do you have anything more?
No.
That was it?
I'll save it for next meeting.
It's good news, right?
It is all good news, it is all good news, there's a lot, a lot happening in the Service Department.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions for Ben? All right, thank you Ben, we'll move on to the Planning Commission Report, good evening, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Planning Commission met in regular session on January 27th, we had one item of new business and two items of old business, the new business item was Mark F. Burr, Burley Burr as he goes by, came in for a conditional use permit to operate a funeral home at 308 Park Avenue, Chardon, in Chardon here, right, which is, as you, some of us may remember it as the old landmark site, and that, that we came up with, they also showed us a concept plan for the, for the building and the parking lot layout, all that will be reviewed in more detail in the future, this was only the granting of a conditional use, and that was granted. Under old business, we had two items that were, had been tabled at the December meeting, first was the Sheets, got their final development approval for their new, new drive-through and gas station at 501 Water Street at the old Rite Aid store, that, we asked them, and so that was approved, and they are going to be proceeding with that, I think, very quickly, as soon as the final plan, development plans are approved by the city engineer, they believe that they could have it open this year, late this year potentially. The other case was a Willery Development, requested a variance for a side yard setback, and that was granted. And then we also had a review of the proposed Chardon Pocket Park at the corner of Cherry and Wilson Mills Road and Water Street, and the, the commission had some, some useful comments, I think, but I don't think, there were, there were no changes to the plan, and well, I won't say anything else more about it, we didn't, we're not, we weren't there to approve it, but just to give some commentary, and it'll be up this evening under, under new business. That concludes my report.
Question, Andy, is that a full funeral parlor?
So it is, it is, it has one viewing, one view, main viewing room, they do not do cremation there, that was one of the questions we'd asked about. The residents in the area were invited to the meeting, and one person did come up and actually spoke in favor of it, she lives right next door, so I think that it'll be a good addition to the city, and, yeah, so it's full service to the, but no cremation.
How did your new commission members work out?
Fantastic, we sworn Randy Sharp and Mr. Rick Dietz as new Planning Commission members, and I look forward to working with them in the future.
Very good, are there any questions for Andy?
Dan, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I missed the meeting, unfortunately, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you Andy, we'll move on to council committee reports, tonight we have Service Committee giving us an update, Debbie?
Thank you, Mayor, Service Committee met on January 23rd, and two topics, it was a lively meeting, anyway, but, the street maintenance program does, shared with us and submitted a copy of the map of the street pavings, there's an, correct me if I'm wrong, there's an increase in the budget from 2025 to 26?
Yes.
And the full paving? Why did I write down 2002?
Because that's the last time it was done.
Okay, thank you, okay, this is for Allen Boulevard and Downing?
Yes, Allen Downing, yes.
Okay, Heather, you want to add anything?
About, about streets, no, I would just say Dave, because you asked, like, one of the things that we got was like the color-coded map of when all the streets have been done, which was really helpful for us to see what, kind of like the loop of what things were on, so that was super helpful for that.
Anything, Doug, you want to add on that?
Estimated project cost at this point for the street paving is about $290,000, that's construction cost, so, once we get through the plans, we'll see if that adjusts up or down.
Thank you, and the other discussion was about cemetery rules, Heather and I were kind of blown away by that, but I think we got, wait, now, Ben, you want to say anything about that?
They were held back from the agenda tonight in the interest of time, but, the quick story is that Superintendent Dowling brought to my attention a potential issue with the types of family members allowed to be in a grave, and that led to a deeper dive into just trying to clean up all the rules and make them more logical, less repetitive, easier for a family member to read and understand what the rules are going to be at the cemetery. So there are only two functional changes that we'll bring to council next month, and the rest of it is just making it as easily readable as possible for grieving families.
Thank you, I have nothing more to add, that's our report, Mayor.
Thank you, are there any other questions for Debbie or Heather? Move on to hearing of persons before council, and tonight we have two at least, and we'll start with Chief Geis, welcome Chief.
Thank you for having me. Just wanted to come in, kind of do a little recap of 2025, I don't know if you guys got this, so, I'm finally starting to learn our new recording software, and it turns out it's got some useful stuff, so, this kind of gives you a little bit of breakdown, as you see there was 1,363 runs in the city for the year, that's pretty consistent with last year, we did run a total of 2,393 calls, that was including Chardon Township, Clardon Township, it was actually six less calls than last year, can kind of contribute that to some of our community risk reduction efforts, and in 2025, knock on wood, we did not have any major events where we had forty and fifty calls in one day, big storm event or anything like that, so, that was a good thing, we had, I think, probably two of those in like 2024, so, Rick's Risk Reduction, made contact with eighteen individuals, if you remember, that was a position that we created in 2023, with, that would go out and kind of be a liaison between the residents and potential services that they were available to, to try and get assistance if they needed it. Our Fire Prevention Bureau conducted 240 annual inspections, ninety re-inspections, the re-inspections, if there was violations found on the annual inspection, he would have to go out and do a re-inspection, and he also went out and did a hundred, witnessed a hundred and eight system tests, so, if a hood system has to be tested, or a sprinkler, or an alarm system test, he goes out and witnesses, there's companies that come out and test those and certify them, oftentimes he goes out and witnesses those tests, so, Ken's been busy around town. And as Mr. Young mentioned, December 17th, we officially signed the paperwork and placed the order for the new 3349, we do not expect to see that until sometime in 2029, 2030. The total cost for that truck, the initial quote was $2,209,575, with the $1 million grant that we received from the state, and with the assistance from council, we were able to purchase a $2.2 million truck for $984,000, so that was a pretty awesome, awesome thing, so, very happy to announce, we started our cadet program again, the fire department ran a cadet program from the seventies up until about 2013, which, we didn't have enough people with enough time to, to run it, so the cadet program is open from, for high schoolers aged fourteen to nineteen, it's anyone living within our coverage area, and it's, its purpose is to introduce them into the fire service, they meet on Thursday evenings, we have instructors, they go through, they get their own fire gear, they're obviously not going into fires, but they do, they do trainings and stuff, we have a number of people that work for us currently, that have been there for twenty-plus years that started as cadets with us, so it's a great program, get people interested in the service early, and, you know, hopefully they stay with us, so, another nice thing, we, the county has special teams that operate in larger incidents, so, we are happy that we now have a member of our department on all the county special teams, so the county has a dive team, which handles obviously water rescue, dive stuff, they have a hazmat team, a fire investigation unit, and a drone team, and we now have members on all of those teams that respond out, so, and that's all I got, anybody's got any questions for me?
About the cadets, how are you, are you reaching out to, I'm sure they're sons and daughters of your fire department, but, I mean, do you put a, did you put, or would you put a post on Facebook?
So, so we did, we put some stuff out on social media, we've gone up to the career day up at the high school, we set up a booth up there, we actually are currently full, we capped it at fifteen for right now, just because that's with the amount of people we have to instruct, that's as, as many as we feel safe having at one time, and right now we have, we have all fifteen, so, we have an application process, and I believe they have a few applications that are, that are waiting to come in if somebody were to leave, so.
That's good, is that a year-round thing, or?
It's a year-round thing, yep.
Any women in that group?
There is, yep.
1,363, that's, and I was looking at this as you were talking, that's city?
That is just city, yeah.
Go on to page two, on the right-hand side, how do you read that?
It, it gets a little jumbled, so, when I can go in here, in order to, to print this, it, it has to condense it, I can, I can expand this and break it up more if you really wanted to break it down by incident.
Like building fire, which, which line is the number to look?
Let me see where I'm at.
The third one down, building fire.
Four.
It's four.
Yeah.
So is it the, the third line, the number for each of the, each of the incident type?
The third line.
Four is, well, I see building fire.
I would, I would have to expand that one out to be able to, to line them all up, but I can, if you would like, I can get you a, more of a breakdown if you want to see the exact, exact numbers for each, each incident.
All I need to know is for each of these incidents, what's the number?
Okay, yeah, I can get that, I can break it out, it's kind of hard to read.
At your convenience, Snuglock.
Not a problem.
Okay.
All right.
Chief, you're doing a great job, good work.
Thank you much.
And thanks for keeping us safe.
Not a problem, appreciate your support.
All right, we'll move on to Abigail Blashinsky, welcome Abigail.
Hi.
Requesting permission for Holiday Market on the square, and this is your second time here, or maybe your third, I forget, but?
I know, it feels like our third, it's our second, we are requesting permission, the Chardon Square Association for the Holiday Market, when we were here in November, the main questions or concerns was essentially the hut placement and the safety of the huts, so we did create a poster, a 3D poster of the Chardon Square with models of the wooden huts and where they would be placed, which is along the sidewalks, as you see here, and in regarding safety, we did follow up with the fire chief and chief of police, and had great conversations with them, and if you did have any questions about those conversations, you can defer to them as well.
Now, there was an electrical power system issue, was that resolved, or are we still working on that?
Yes, so I did talk to the Maple Festival Board, and they're willing to work with us in allowing us to use their power source that they use for the Maple Festival.
So how many are you planning, or does that depend on sponsorship?
It depends on how our sponsorships come through, there will be a sponsor for an exclusive hut sponsorship package, and based off how many we get, could be how many we are able to build and custom.
What's the maximum?
Well, if you ask Abby, it's going to be like 25 to 30, but?
So, that's not a true, possibly that that's not a true representation.
Not necessarily, these are placements that could be accurate.
But there could be more.
Well, being the first year, I think shooting for fifteen is very doable. Yes, there's fifteen on that poster right now, we thought that was a good number to present and showcase in a positive way.
Going back to the power issue, so, I don't know who can answer this for me, but are we running lines to every, every one of the little buildings across, how are we, how are we doing that?
Possibly, I mean, I, I know we've had some conversations with Mike, that's still up for more discussions, I know my last conversation with Mike, we were talking about doing receptacles, is that right, Mike? Putting in receptacles in strategic locations, so that's still a work in progress.
But at this point, Mike, there wouldn't be lines running across sidewalks or anything like that, is that still to be?
They won't, they won't be able to use extension cords because they want to heat them, they won't go to, hot heater, south extension, we'll have to have a licensed electrician come in and face the receptacle so they can be?
Mike, would those, would those be permanent, then?
Yes.
Those be above ground?
Yes.
Like the ones we currently have up there around some trees. I seem to recall the last time you presented, that the buildings were going to be potentially off of the sidewalks, but now you, you have them parallel with sidewalks for ease of use, and also that we don't have to make, no removal efforts to meander through the park.
Correct.
So that's, I think that's an improvement. And.
And you're still planning four weekends?
Yes. Right now, we're planning Friday to Sunday. We did have a conversation with the Sandusky Christmas Market. They're going into their third year, and it's been incredibly successful for them. And we talked about times and dates, and they recommended a Friday through Sunday to start. But they have a big demand over there, and it's been very positive results, Friday through Sunday.
And, and the kickoff weekend would be Smugglers' Saturday, which is also our lighting of the square. So that's when the market would start.
The day after, the lighting.
The lighting's on Saturday.
Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
And retail around the square, I've only received positive comments about the event, but have there been any opposition from retailers that you're kind of competing with what they're doing in their location?
We've actually had retailers on the square come up to us.
And want to be a part of the process.
Wanting to be a part of the committee.
Yeah.
They're excited to join and get started on this. So it's been very positive on our end, too.
The, the buildings themselves, being hauled in, already built, being built on-site, what's the process there?
On-site. They're being built on-site.
On-site.
Mm-hmm.
How big are your buildings again?
Ten by ten. They're going to be foldable structures, and they'll be moved over. We actually already have a hut builder in place, just waiting for the green light. And he'll bring them on, and he has a team in place to prop them up when we're ready to go.
Ten by ten and hut hall?
Not, maybe a, I can't remember, ten and a half, eleven. Not too much, if, if you're thinking of the roof, where it angles up a little bit, just a little bit higher, but not.
So a little bit higher than a basketball hoop?
Was there a building permit?
Was the question I was about to ask, was did you confirm with the building department if these would require building permits or not?
Not yet.
And, I'm sorry, this is the first I'm hearing about running permanent electrical lines. When would you ideally dig the trenches to run the electrical lines?
Mike?
We have.
They, they have to get quotes yet to, yeah, see what it's actually going to cost to do that.
There is only so much we can do and be progressive on without that final permission to really start getting the ball rolling. If you do look at the next page after the goals and mission, mission statement, we have made an insane amount of progress without that final approval. So everything else is very possible and doable. We just have to make sure all the time we're putting in is useful for the next steps in getting all those additional quotes.
Is the building permit issue problematic financially, or timeline? What's the process for what they may need?
I'm not super familiar with our building department here yet. From, you know, previous experience, they, if the permit is required, what, I mean, a, a building permit will be required for the electrical, at the very least, if not the huts. You'll probably want to submit thirty days before work begins for your planner view to go through, and to actually get your permit in hand before you start digging. And then however long the job takes, plus inspection time, which I have heard that they're pretty good at inspecting on the day called. It, it's not necessarily that it makes it take longer, it's just that it makes it more complex. And they'll need, if building permits are required, will, council will need to pass some sort of resolution that we can give to the building department, saying that you have granted permission for somebody who isn't the owner of the property to construct items on the property.
You know, we have a lot of pretty holiday decorations that are on the square. And I think coordinating these is going to be a lot of takeaway. I mean, thanks to Chardonnese Square Association for paying for all the, you know, how does this interfere, or will it with the arches, the snowflakes?
Amy, can you press play on that? Press, press play on it?
We actually think it will help enhance the existing decorations on the park. So all the huts are going to be uniform in design and decoration. And like I said, I think, or we think it'll just enhance the already existing decorations we put up.
Is there a minimum, like if you only get five that are interested in putting up a hut, I mean, if you only get one or two?
Based off of, I don't think it'd be canceled, because based off of the traction we're already getting, there will be more than five huts. We have talked to potential sponsors already and have verbal already a good amount of money. So there is a lot of positive business and community feedback to this, and everyone's just ready for that final approval for us.
I, I hope you appreciate our being cautious, because this is a major change in what people are used to seeing during the holiday on the square. So I do see the advantage. I see the attraction to bringing in people from far distance. And it does sound like this does attract many people looking for a different way of approaching an outdoor activity, and so it's all good. Is there anything else from staff, Mike, or anybody that we haven't covered, electrical, Ben?
Sorry. I promise, I, I really don't mean to be a, whatever, Scrooge. Who has control over who gets the booth, and what criteria would you use for that?
So that would be the CSA. And we would approach this event like we approach other events that we sponsor on the square. So we, we do the Arts Fest. That's a juried event as well. We do the Harvest Handmade Market. Same thing, it's a juried event. So there'll be a process for vendors to apply, and we'll just follow our guidelines.
Would those guidelines take into account anything with respect to any religious observance or non-religious observance?
I suppose, I mean, that's something that the committee that we put together will discuss, and when we come up with the protocol for applicants, I mean, that's something that potentially could be in there.
When you say it could be in there, meaning you would consider whether it's a holiday, or whether it's a Christian-based hut?
It is called the Chardonnese Holiday Market, not the Chardonnese Christmas Market anymore. So we should have more of a broader horizon of how we can technically jury the vendor application process, just like any other fest we do on the square.
Okay. And when would you have those criteria established?
Not until we're ready to, you know, start looking into vendors.
I don't need to put you on the spot. I get it. Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm just flagging items as, as I see them without being too, I don't, I don't want to be a...
I mean, the CSA does also put up the nativity on the square, so.
Yeah, I get that. The, the, the next question, I suppose, is signage. I see that there's a Santa's Workshop and a North Pole Mail box. I, I assume that those items, I guess, who would have control over location and, and text within?
So the mailbox that is placed in the square is something that we've been doing for a number of years, and that's right, right by the Heritage House entrance doors. So that wouldn't change. It would just be an addition.
Then I, I saw in here, I guess that one of the items for vendor applications, you'd be looking at churches as well?
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again.
On section five of the Holiday Market updates, you want to offer meaningful opportunities for families, schools, churches, and community groups. Would you be looking at specific denominations of churches, or would it be?
No, it would be open to any and all.
That would include, you know, mosques, the Satanists, whatever. Okay, just, sure.
So Ben, would it be simpler if they just took that out, churches out?
We should talk about that another time. There's a lot that goes into that. And I, and I, I don't mean to be difficult. I just, one of the complications that, I've said it before, but I'll say it again. We do have a free exercise and establishment clause that, those are provisions that are unique to the United States Constitution, that are not necessarily present in most European countries. And the consequence of that is using the European market as a framework does trigger some challenges that are different than what they have going on in Europe. And so trying to be supportive of everything and helping to flag issues so that the council is aware of what we have to work through. So I've said, I've said what I'll say.
Okay.
So Abby, the picture that you gave us that's on the first page, that has Heritage House in life and Santa's Workshop, that's not, you're not proposing to put signage up?
No, this is just something creative to get you guys really seeing the bigger picture.
Right. So that was brought up just because of other folks using the Heritage House during their time.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is that the placement of the electrical lines still needs to be worked out, and then what the outlets, how those outlets are going to be, because if they're a permanent addition to the square, how those, right, Andy, like how those are going to go, and where they're going to go on the square exactly, and how they might impact other things. But it's not a deal breaker. The building permits is also something that still has to be answered, and how that, that is resolved, or, or what that means, right, for this project?
We just need an answer from the CBO of if, if these will trigger Ohio Building Code or not. Because typically, any structure over six feet that the public will be invited into.
Yeah.
Requires building permit.
So I guess my thought on this is that, that a lot of, it's a big thing, maybe fifteen, maybe we want to start with ten. I know, like, right? But, but any event that we've put on the square that's a give back to the community, didn't go off without a hitch the first year, and it didn't go off, you know, it took years, but some of these are well-established. They improve the quality of life. It's the, all the festivals that we do. You know, some of them aren't that old. The handmade market, which is incredibly popular, is, is something that's still relatively new for the, for the community. So I guess my ask would be if these issues are resolved and brought back, and, I mean, why wouldn't we give it a try? Truly, why wouldn't we let it, give it a try? Say, we're going to give it a year. They've already put a ton of time, clearly, investment in time into it. There's a lot of passion behind it, obviously, too. So why wouldn't we try? I mean, I'm fine if you said, yep, this is, you know, no thirty, Abby, but like, if we had ten, we wanted to try it ten, give it, like, put, or, you know, or twelve, whatever. But I think just because we don't know what it's going to be like, to not try it would be unfortunate.
I agree with that. Just once again, being cautious, and having Ben ask questions relative to First Amendment rights, and whether they deny someone accessibility to that. Does that come back to them? Does that come back to us if their protocol for denial doesn't?
It depends. The short answer is, you only have a cause of action against the government when, for constitutional violation. So the private right wouldn't exist. So it'd be the city. But we would dispute that, of course. Yes.
If I can make a suggestion for a way forward, given the large scope of what they're proposing being several days, several weekends, what if we treat it similarly to how we treat the Maple Festival, of we negotiate a specific contract for them and this event? And so I guess what I'm saying is, if council likes the idea of the event, but is a little hesitant about the details, council could tonight say yes to the event with the caveat that CSA is going to work with me and Ben C. to, over the course of this spring, summer, negotiate a contract like Maple Festival to bring back to all of you for final approval at some point later this year.
Except they need to know, well, you're saying, we would say, yes, you can do it, but you have to do this part of it, because they're trying to work ahead and get sponsorship. That would still allow them to move forward with that.
Yes. I'm saying, council says, yes, you can do it, but our condition is, you have to solve all these details and bring back the solution to those details in a contract between the city and CSA for this event later this year. Are you okay with that?
I am. Yeah.
I'm, I'm just going to say, it's a great idea. However, I don't think the location fits. I'm concerned that this is multiple weekends, and I, and I don't favor that the, that the square have these huts up for a month, roughly. So I am not in favor of it the way it is now. I wish you could do it for a weekend. It would be great. I have no doubt about that at all. But I, I, personally, I just can't support this activity for that length of time on the square at the holiday time.
Dave, I, I will say, just a point of information, at the Square Association meeting this week, it was talked about that this, you know, this isn't gonna, Home for the Holidays is still going to go on. The, they're not asking, like, they're not, you're not reserving the Heritage House for the month. You don't get the Heritage House. Other things can still go on. It's not going to prevent anything from being in the Heritage House. So I just want to make that point.
And if I can make a point? So when we spoke to the, the folks at the Sandusky Market, they told us that because of how successful the first year was, they combined all of their events, starting in November to December, into that Holiday Market, because of how successful that market itself was.
They actually were familiar with the Chardonnese area as well. They have roots here, family roots, and they lit up when they heard we were picking Chardonnese for a Holiday Market. And if you go over to Europe, or even other towns that are starting to get traction of this idea across the US, it's a huge diverse towns that are picking this idea. And it doesn't have to just look like a, a beautiful Chardonnese square to make it beautiful. There are so many extra details. We just have the privilege of having a beautiful square in our town called Chardonnese, where it is a perfect fit.
We disagree.
That's all right.
That's, that's fine. That's fine.
I'm in support of the idea, but the installation of permanent underground electric is the first time I've heard of that. I'm a little bit, frankly, I'm concerned about a permanent modification to the square like that for something that may, if it's only a possibility, it's a temporary event. Underground electric installation with a junction box, that's not a cheap project. Should we have funding for that?
Potentially.
Potentially. Will the city have access to it? Once the junction boxes are in place, are we allowed to use it for our events?
This is the first I've heard of it as well. If it's off of our power meter, I would assume, yes.
If, I mean, the Maple Festival manages it without having separate junction boxes that permanently install, or they likely update the same manner.
I mean, we could certainly look into that, if, if we can.
They also have a lot of extension cords, right, Mike, running during the festival, all over the place, including over sidewalks, right?
Yeah, they're also, they're, you know, their electric draw, every one of those pieces of, of rides are run by electric motors that take a huge draw of current and, and so on. These are just operating, you know, electric lights. And so in theory, a, a U L-listed outdoor extension cord should be, should be just fine to power whatever's going in in these ten, ten by ten.
I thought Mike said there was going to be heating set.
Could be, huh? Okay, could be.
I thought there was, yeah, maybe heaters. Is that, is that accurate, Mike?
They were talking, plugging in portable heaters.
Yeah. That would be the variable, you know, to use propane heaters or.
Yeah.
The other question I have is, is, you don't envision any great changes. And, you know, what, how do you, how do you level these things off? I mean, the, the square is not perfectly leveled. I mean, the square is not perfectly level behind these sidewalks. You know, if you'd have the floor level, you'd have to do something to.
Let the builder, we actually have a builder that will put them on the squares. So, the huts don't lay on the, on the ground flat, they will be on legs, if you will. So if we have to adjust the leg heights, I'm assuming that's something that can be done in order to make it level.
Okay, I mean, is that, it's not one size fits all, it's not one leg height that's going to work everywhere around the square.
Correct.
So each one of these is going to be custom-built for that, that specific location, going to be numbered, a little allotments.
Yep. That's what's great about our model, is they're all custom, we're starting from scratch for a reason. Sam, Sandusky's in their third year, and now they are officially customizing their own huts. So they actually, we're very excited that we're starting immediately from scratch, because it'll be very beneficial for us.
The other concern, we have this with the festival, is no tree trimming of trees on the square to make these huts fit.
No.
We have the festival, they cannot trim trees, you can pull branches back, you can tie branches back maybe, but they are not to be cutting branches. So, no different than the festival.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I would, at some point, just create a ten by ten framework, just a simple light framework, and take it each, each place that you intend to put these things, and see how it, how it works with that site, given what Dave just said about not interfering with trees, the grading, and so on. You know, I, I have issues with making permanent modifications to the, to the square.
I'm just curious, what about your liability insurance, that umbrella or the square?
Yes. So the CSA gets covered for, for all their events, and we would just add this as an additional event.
Do we have a separate agreement with you, with the Sharon Square Association, like the Arts Festival and that kind of thing?
No.
That falls under the blanket of the overall one?
Well, I think we could look at moving forward, we've had some suggestions of things that still need to be resolved. But, I'm personally on both pages moving forward, once again. Once Ben has developed a contract that serves some of the topics that we talked about today, and whether that needs a full council vote tonight to authorize, I could make that motion, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with.
Well, just to negotiate, not enter into.
And, just to negotiate?
Yes.
An agreement with Holiday Market in the square for the dates specified in your, your byline here? And then, once that agreement's complete, could that be a month from now? Would that, that be sufficient for you all to understand that we're?
Yes.
Like to move forward, but we? What's that?
Can I have two, since union negotiations start on Tuesday next week?
Two months.
Nothing goes quick when the lawyers are involved either.
Right.
You know, that's fine, but I think, does two months, that, that means that you potentially are not gaining sponsorship for that two months.
Within those two months, are we allowed to get working on things? Extra details, meeting more with sponsors, is there?
You could, but once again, until the details of a contract are worked out with your organization, I wouldn't be collecting money yet. You may want to look at getting some sort of sponsor, sponsorship initiative so that you know what's coming in once all the paperwork is signed, but.
So.
I, I believe I can get it done in a month, I just, in case union negotiations start to consume my life, I don't want to promise that it'll be done in a month.
So, are we clear on what are the open issues? Can we say back what they're, you know, for the record, what are the open issues that still need to be resolved? Ben, I mean, you know them, you've got language issues, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to make the list, because then inevitably, something I haven't thought of yet is going to come up, and everyone's going to hate me, so, seems like there's, there's a lot we have to address. I think the big picture items are building issues, some sort of structure for how you allocate fairly, and without discriminating against anyone for any particular reason. Space for the huts, and.
Building permits?
Power, the power issue.
Power permits, all that stuff.
Right, okay.
Can I ask a question? So.
All we can do, what's on the table right now, is I made the recommendation to let the city manager start to negotiate with them on a contract. That's the best we can do based on things that came up tonight. And you asked, could you continue to work forward? That's up to you, Ben gave us the two months, he's going to probably work more quickly than that, but I don't see anything of those issues that cannot be resolved. But until we see it all down more on paper, then let's hold off until you say it's an absolute go.
Okay.
Fair enough? You have a question?
I did. In regards to how the application process is structured, how is that any different than any other event that the CSA does, where we don't need council's input in our juring process?
So I would say two things. One, it probably isn't different, because I haven't really talked to anyone about it, so it probably hasn't been raised as an issue. But the, the nature of this does have, I mean, most CSA events don't really have an inherent, or the potential to implicate the establishment of a religion, or at least the perception of potential establishment of religion. And so, in delegating public space to that use, it, it carries with it the concern that someone could say that the city of Chardon is establishing or advocating the establishment of the Christian faith.
Okay.
Or a certain denomination thereof, and depends on how many, but you get it, and that's, that's the issue.
Okay.
So you're proposing a meeting with both you, both Ben's, and them, so that they can address these issues, those issues? Right, the language issues, and you need to do them, to do some work before they come? Right, it's talking to the building department, and it's still working on the electric. Is that correct? Do you need a second to Chris's motion?
Yes, we do.
I'll make it.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha? I'm going to say no. Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Moleski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Another item on our agenda tonight, submitted by Cindy Suzinski, and Cindy is not here. But we had some information concerning another holiday event. Cindy wants to hold a holiday market in the Heritage House on twelve thirteen of twenty twenty-six. Currently, this is a for-profit venture, and currently, our Heritage House rules do not allow that without council's approval.
How does this coordinate?
It doesn't. I mean, it's, it's going to overlap.
This is in the Heritage House.
Same, same time, right?
Similar timeframe. This is a one day.
A one day, but it is.
In the Heritage House.
There in the Heritage House, but it's why yours is going on outdoors.
Yes, we'll use the Heritage House other days, but yes, that day's reserved for the other holiday market.
And I understand that the Heritage House gets pretty booked up that time of year?
Yes, well, December is very popular for parties and.
And you're aware of that?
Yes. We did request already, we just have to wait for next steps.
But there are other groups already taking the Heritage House?
Yes.
Which could, which could block you, right?
It's fine, it would not slow what we're doing down.
So the question to council is, do we allow a for-profit group to come in one time only and sell merchandise in the Heritage House?
Didn't the Cryptid and Curiosities Group sell stuff inside the Heritage House during that festival? They had books in there, and authors, and things like that, that was for profit?
I don't recall the details they did.
And other, right, I mean, other folks, so.
What we sell, Maple Surf.
Right. So there's a precedent, I guess I would say, that.
Go ahead. Well, I've known Cindy for a long time, she's active in the community, and I don't have any reservation with it. Does anybody else on council have a reservation?
Is she going to be, someone needs to talk to her about signage? In case she's thinking she's going to put signs up all over the place, or something, just.
Well, she'll have to do all the same things, insurance and all that kind of stuff, right, Ben?
Yeah, I suppose I, we'll have to think through this one a little bit more in light of, again, not to be Scrooge, but some of the same issues here are present. It's a little different, because it's not in the public space, it's in closed space, and will be open to the public. That does carry with it certain traditional considerations.
They would not have the same insurance requirement, they are just renting the Heritage House.
Correct.
But what they want to rent it for is a for-profit activity, and per our policy, that requires council approval. So it is, it is not an, an event or an assemblage permit like what we just talked about.
We also used to rent it to Brew Fest that turned into a for-profit as well.
Which would be in conjunction with a special event, assemblage, not. Like this is, they're just renting it like a private event, just like having a holiday party.
Gotcha.
But they want to conduct commercial activity out of the building.
That's what the Brew Fest did, they sold all their tickets inside of it.
Yes, but I'm saying they also had an assemblage permit for their event.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
From the city.
So we're saying the same things, two sides of the same coin.
All right, so, are we taking a vote on this?
Well, it sounds, it sounds like there may be some reservation from council there.
Council or yours truly? I, no, I, this, this is perfectly acceptable.
All right.
All right, I'll make the motion then.
Seconded, seconded by Andy. Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Moleski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Okay. You'll let her know? Move on to hearing of the general public. Anyone like to address council, come up here and identify yourself, and tell us who you are, and you can, ask questions, make comments.
Hello, folks, I am here tonight, my name is Mark Horvath, I'm co-owner of Dumpster Bandit. I'm usually alongside my wife, she couldn't make it tonight, Caitlin's at home with three sick kids, so I'm solo with one of our employees here. And I don't, a lot of you folks might not know us, I just wanted to introduce myself, we're a local trash company, right here in Chardon. And a few years ago, when your trash, when your first trash bid was getting going, you know, we were a lot younger, and I was watching it go on, and I'm like, man, you know, how cool would it be to be able to bid on something like that? And here we are, and, you know, we're on the docket tonight to potentially, you know, have this awarded. And I just want to tell you how grateful we are to be here, and we're sitting right over there, if you guys have any questions for us.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Anyone else, yes, Rachel, come on up.
Hi, I'm Rachel Ruffer with WM, probably knows better as Waste Management. We've been servicing the city of Chardon for decades, and we hope to obviously continue doing that. We're very active in, in the community. Lance, who is the route manager, is on the board of the Chamber of Commerce here in Chardon. One thing I'd like, I'd like to point out a few things, seventy-four percent of Chardon residents use online system, have an online profile with WM, that means that they, most of them pay their bills automatically, they're on auto pay. They also are able to communicate with us, request bulk item pickups right through the app or online, or obviously, they can still call us, but since they have the profile, it's just a couple clicks on their phones. And are, we have a lot of technology that will allow them to know what time the trucks will be at their homes. And then, we have cameras on our trucks that will be able to take, that take pictures of the homes that we can then use, like if there is a service question, or someone wanted to know if their cart was out, that's how we're able to service those accounts. So, I just wanted to highlight that staying with WM will maintain consistency, you don't have to swap the carts out, and then the residents will have a seamless transition, because they already have their, most of them have their online profiles, and then, you know, the billing and everything will stay the same. We were able to roll back the price considerably, and so, we're hoping that that will sweeten the pot and allow you to remain with WM. We do have a driver here named Patrick. Patrick services Chardon on, on one of the routes, and he has a story where he saw one of your elderly residents had fallen in the driveway, and he got out of his truck and, and picked her up and took care of her. And she called into our customer service line. And one of your employees, Becky, lives near, lives near this resident, and she told, she's actually the one that told me about that. So we have automatic side loaders that I'm sure you noticed when you're being serviced, where the arm comes out of the truck, it picks up the truck and puts it in. That's good for two reasons. It helps our drivers remain safe, and it's very efficient, allows us to get in and out off your streets as fast as possible. During cleanup day, we were able to get in and out of the city within an hour and a half, which is incredibly efficient. And I used to be a former municipal employee, city of University Heights, and I used to take those phone calls for trash pickups. And let me tell you, trash is something you don't really think about until there's a problem, and consistency is going to be key. So, you know, we would like to make our pitch to say, we love servicing Chardon, our, a lot of our drivers live here, and we would like to remain servicing you. So, if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Well, don't ask any questions, sorry, guys.
Okay.
You guys, we've done a competitive bidding process, and both sides of the, everyone who submitted a bid is detailed in the manager's memo of January thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. You're supposed to make a decision on how you're going to award your bid contract based on the bid documents that were solicited and submitted by qualified bidders. Certainly, everyone has the right to come up and speak, and provide comment and content, that's a right that they're entitled to. Ultimately, however, your job is to make a decision based on the recommendation of the manager, and the factors, and the information provided in the bid package, and all the, everyone got the same package, and had the opportunity to present the same information. So, you can have a back and forth if you want to, but my position is that that type of discussion is really outside of what you're supposed to consider when awarding a contract of this nature. So if you want to have conversations, by all means, you're entitled to it. But I would say that that information can't form the basis for any part of what you decide with respect to awarding a contract. You award contracts based on the information that you solicit, and the information that interested vendors provide. So all of this information is great, but if you consider it, you're not providing a fair and equal opportunity for everyone to engage in and earn an award of a public contract.
So if we do have questions, Ben, are you saying then that we're going to be asking them?
If you have questions, they should relate to the bid packages that were submitted.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak to council? Very good, we'll move. Very good, we'll move on to old business, we have no old business, move on to new business. Consider a new C-two liquor permit for Ohio Springs Inc. Doing business as sheets for a location at Water Street, Wilson Mills Road. Ben, you're taking us through this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was speaking with one of our council members here. So council, you have before it a notice of legislative authority for a permit for Ohio Springs Inc. Sheets. Looking, generally, you have the obligation to either do nothing or you can oppose the, the permit. Not aware of any facts or circumstances that would justify you taking an adverse position with respect to the issuance of the permit, but I defer to the chief of, chief of police on that issue, if there is any.
We've had no instance that would rise to this level.
Is this, if anything, is this because they're moving or is it just their license is up? I believe it's because they're moving, new address.
It's because it's a new address.
We're not taking a vote?
No, no, you said, no, the act, the act of taking no action resolves, resolves the matter.
Alright. Are there any other questions for Ben? We'll move on to new business B, consider approval of the Pocket Park Design. And Adam's going to put something up on screen there, or Amy did that, and Adam, you gonna take us through some details?
If I can just real quick first, remind the public how we got here.
Okay.
So this is currently vacant land at the corner of Water and Cherry, which is also the intersection with Wilson Mills, for people to orient themselves. This land was given to the city with some deed restrictions on it by one of the neighboring businesses who wanted to prevent competition and because of those deed restrictions, essentially the highest and best use is a public park. So before I came, Randy, previous manager, conceived of this Pocket Park project, which we have had great public participation in. We've had a wonderful public feedback process that you all participated in, probably saw at Fall Fest. And we had a fantastic, beautiful wish list of everything this park could be. And then we had to face, okay, what can we actually afford to put in this park? So what Adam's gonna take us through is the final design we have for your approval tonight that keeps those core elements of what we heard most that the public wanted to see in this park, but is within the budget authorized by council and the CIP. Take it away, Adam.
Thank you, Ben. So essentially what you're looking at for this design is the bottom left corner of the park. That is a script Chardon sign, possibly elevated, possibly backlit. In front of that would be stamped concrete to mimic the brick favors along the bike path there, so it'll have that same feel as the bike path in a lot of these areas. And then the top right circle area would be a veterans memorial area with a flag that is lit at night, a couple benches. And then the picnic area to the left of that is an alternate as of right now. But that is kind of the main concept of the park is it's very passive, you're going there to eat lunch or hang out with someone. And then the rest is just plants that have not been identified yet, they will be talked about with our, what's his position? Dave?
Arborist.
Arborist, yes, thank you. So they will be discussed with our arborists and ensure that we choose the right plants for that area. The bushes that circle along the back half there would be, I'm assuming, some kind of arborvitae, creating a shielded view of the building behind it. That's about the gist of it, I think there's a bike rack in there as well, so people using the bike path can ride down the sidewalk to that park, park for bike, eat, eat some lunch.
I think in the planning commission meeting, it was mentioned that the script is gonna be replaced with block letters.
Yeah, it's not gonna be like your Cleveland script, cursive, it'll be more block, something that we got feedback on that kind of matched Chardon a little, a little better.
And you're gonna put trash receptacles?
Yeah, we'll have a couple benches and trash receptacles added after the project's completion.
There's gonna be a flagpole that's lit, right? That's part of the veterans memorial part in back there on the right?
Adam, are those large, five large trees?
Yeah.
At the exit, okay, and, and kinda hard to read this, but I'm seeing two benches, period. That's all that's gonna be in there in terms of for people to sit.
As of now, based on the funding, the first rendering that we got back with multiple benches and seat walls and things like that is, is out of my budget at this point.
So at this point, when you say this is for people to come in, sit down, do whatever, we're only talking two benches, right now?
For now, yeah, I mean, you can take a blanket and sit on a grass area for now.
So the dining area you see on the left side in the drawing is a bid alternate, so if it comes in low enough to be constructed, it would be constructed, but it is not part of the base bid.
Dave, we're still working on getting stakeholder funding for this project?
Where are we? I saw a budget of three hundred and sixty thousand or something, give or take. How much is being funded by other people?
The three sixty that's in the budget is the number from the capital improvement plan. So far, we have not received any written commitments from community groups of exact funding levels.
I've applied for probably somewhere between six to eight grants, have not heard back from all of them. I think two have rejected the project so far.
So Dave, we do have a pretty firm commitment from Rotary, it's just not in hand yet for this. And then they, there are two other veterans groups that we're talking with, so one of the things is if council approves this tonight, we can finish up that part of it. So we do expect to be getting money from stakeholders from Rotary and from perhaps two of the, certainly, I mean, one of the very first meetings we had was with Eagles and BFW with them about, they're very excited about the memorial. So we just have to get this part approved to move forward so we can secure that funding.
I see two issues here, one, do we like the design, that's one thing, right? And then the second issue I see is if this council wants to spend three hundred and seven thousand dollars at this time on this park. So I'm looking at two different things, two, two separate issues.
The council appropriated the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in December as part of the temporary budget, which has included, included everything from the CIP. But with, if council did not want to authorize that spending, it would need to be rescinded.
And we've already, how much have we spent, right, already on the date?
Thirty-five thousand was what council appropriated in last year's budget and was spent for the design work.
I'd like to see a separate vote if we wanna go ahead and do this project in this year. How many other people realized that when you did that temporary appropriation, you approved spending three hundred and seven thousand dollars on this Pocket Park in twenty twenty-six?
It was, that was the number and then we had an agreement with other groups that were gonna be participating, which is what Heather just indicated, that that's still being worked out.
Yes.
But we've already put in thirty-five thousand on this so far. This, every design that I've seen maybe had a few variables compared to what we're looking at here, but this is not, this is a, how did you reference the park, very laid back?
Passive park.
Passive park and it's needed down there, that, that block looks horrible, right? You know, there's good, good stores around there, but that piece of land needs, needs something here. And it looks like there's enough space here that down the road, things could be added or, or, you know, improved, but yes, it's, it's something. We've been in discussion on this Pocket Park for six months or, or longer. So I don't, you know, I understand what you're saying, Dave, but I completely understood the money that was being spent. And I, I still want to see other groups involved with contributing, but this is where, that's where we're at and the process has, has been good, it's been thorough, it's been active, it's been publicly communicated and we've gotten tons of feedback from many, many people on this, so it's, it is time to move forward on it.
Yeah, and Dave, I don't wanna speak for anyone else, but it is significant money that's been allocated for this by these groups. It's not ten thousand dollars, it's significantly more, like, so I feel like we're gonna be able to, if, like, we could report on that at next council.
Were there any other questions or comments about the design or anything else spoken here this evening?
So the, the twenty-seven thousand eight hundred, is that in addition to the thirty-five thousand that's already been spent?
For the architecture quote in your packet?
Yes.
Yes, so the next phase, if council moves forward with these designs tonight, the next phase would be re-engaging with the architect for actual construction drawings that could be submitted to Planning Commission for final development plan approval and then put out to bid for construction.
What do we get for thirty-five thousand dollars, renderings?
We've got these renderings and a public engagement process run by the architect.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the Pocket Park design as presented.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Call the question, please.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Thank you for the work on that, Adam, Ben, Heather, I know you had a lot of hands in there, so thank you. Alright, we're gonna move on to legislation. A, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
Ordinance to make annual appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Chardon, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
Second.
Second and further discussion, call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Ordinance number thirty-three thirty-nine, and ordinance to make annual appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Chardon, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number thirty-three thirty-nine, and ordinance to make annual appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Chardon, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance thirty-three thirty-nine?
So moved?
Second.
Moving to second it, discussion, Ben and Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, tonight I am pleased to present for your consideration the permanent budget for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year. Tonight, we have for you a revamped budget book, which provides an overview summary of all key performance indicators and metrics from the budget. Additional details are available to you through the complete online budget book that goes with it. Of course, tonight, I'll be happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability, but in the event that I do not know the answer, I have invited a representative of every department to be here tonight and Mark has with him on his laptop the online budget book to quickly look up anything that is not trapped in my brain that you may ask me to see. So in the interest of time, we'll just dive right in. So on page three of your book is the budget summary. The city remains in a strong financial position for twenty twenty-six. Higher than expected year-end carryovers meant that the city will once again be able to make a contribution to our emergency reserve fund and all funds that have a required carryover balance meet or exceed those required carryover targets. In total, this year's budget is approximately thirty million dollars, including intra-fund transfers and this is a little under nine hundred thousand more than the twenty twenty-five actuals, which can be attributed to strong transfers to reserves and capital, as well as having twenty-seven pay periods in twenty twenty-six instead of the usual twenty-six pay periods. If you turn to page four, on the adjacent page four, you should see active fund balance sheet for all funds in twenty twenty-six. The reason I call this the active fund balance is because only those funds that had revenues or expenses for the year are shown on this page, so if a fund had no revenue and no expenses in twenty twenty-six, it was excluded. An example of that is the self-insurance fund, currently the city is not self-insured, so that fund has no financial activity for twenty twenty-six. In total, we have sixty-one funds for the city, forty-one of which have activity in twenty twenty-six. The funds on this page highlighted in green are tied to a special property tax levy and funds highlighted in red are tied to a special fee levied by the municipal court. Key funds for you to pay attention to are the general fund, number one-one-one, it's right at the top of the sheet, that accounts for all core city operations. The second is Fund Two Thirty, which is at the bottom of the first block of highlighted funds on your page and that funds our Chardon Fire Department contract. Third is Fund Four Fifty-two, the capital improvements, which is just before the last block of highlights on your page. That accounts for nearly all of our non-utility capital expenditures. And then finally, of course, we have the two utility operating funds, Five Sixty and Five Seventy, which are just below the last block of highlights on your page and those keep our water and sewer systems working. And unlike the rest of our funds, for those funds, expenditures determine rates as opposed to revenues determining expenditures. So we'll talk more about specific expenditures as we get to each department's page, but this is sort of a quick snapshot for you of the entire city budget. Page five, if you turn page, revenues. As a government entity, we are, of course, primarily funded by tax revenues from municipal income tax, property tax and state taxes, specifically motor vehicle, gas and license taxes. Those would be included in the intergovernmental portion of the chart on the bottom of page five. Our income tax represents more than a third of our revenues and it did decline slightly in twenty twenty-five due to a spike in twenty twenty-four from a large back tax payment, as well as reduced collections in specifically corporate net profit, but also individual returns. We'll continue to monitor, monitor those collections throughout the year, but the city is still experiencing a relatively high rate of growth and development that will help keep our revenue consistent. In twenty twenty-six, we will also see the implementation of adjusted recreation rates, including most notably the municipal pool, as we discussed previously at council, that should help make that department more self-sufficient. But to put all of that worrying into perspective, even though twenty twenty-five income tax slightly declined, overall, twenty twenty-five revenues still outperformed initial budget projections for the year by more than a million dollars. So we budget very conservatively because that keeps us in the black. On page six, expenses are really where the budget lives and breathes. The total budgeted expenditures for twenty twenty-six are seven hundred eighty-one thousand dollars higher than twenty twenty-five actual expenditures. About two hundred thousand of that can be attributed to having twenty-seven instead of twenty-six pays in the year. About a hundred and fifty thousand of it can be attributed to an additional transfer to our emergency reserve fund because we had the money available. Another two hundred thousand is an increase in our capital outlay from this year compared to last year. And then finally, the remaining roughly two hundred and thirty-one thousand is emergency contingencies and rising personnel costs spread throughout all the departments. However, we have a history of conservative spending, just like conservative revenue budgeting and that is evidenced by in twenty twenty-five, the departments collectively throughout the city returned more than a million dollars in unspent funds to the general. more than $1 million in unspent funds to the general fund, which is what then enabled us to make such large reserve transfers to capital and our emergency fund in this year's budget. By function, our largest expense is public service for 2026 at 39%, public safety is 20, and then utilities are 18, as our top three. These numbers are skewed from a normal year in '26 because we have a higher-than-typical capital outlay. Specifically, we have two projects that will be bid by the state this year that we have to pay our portion to the state for that bidding, but they won't actually be constructed till 2027. If capital were excluded from those calculations, then public safety, services, and utilities would all be about a fourth of our operating expenses. By classification, as is to be expected, personnel is our largest cost driver at 41% of our expenses. And in 2026, as I just mentioned, capital is slightly inflated because we have those two large state projects that we have to pre-fund. In a more typical year, though, contracted services would be higher than capital, and this is likely to keep growing as technology continues to be a core part of our improving government, and increasingly, software companies prefer the software-as-a-service model instead of the good old days of selling you a copy of Word 2003 once, and you never have to buy it again. Next page, page seven, transfers. Each year, the city's general fund, as well as some other funds, make intra-department transfers to support services that are accounted for in other funds. I do want to make an important note here that these transfers are double-counted in our budget. And so, what I mean by that is they appear once as an expense in the fund that transfers, and then a second time as the actual final expense. So, if you were to take out all the transfers in the budget, our actual spend for next year is about $23 million. In 2026, the general fund is budgeted to transfer 4.84 million to our various funds, which is predominantly capital because of that great savings from 2025. But it will also receive from other funds just over $565,000. This is from the sewer funds debt repayment obligations, and then also the 27th pay. We have a special emergency reserve fund for the 27th pay year that we build up and then deplete in years when we have a 27th pay. Per city policy, the capital transfer is tied to excess funds from our general fund. So, that 2.9 million large transfer this year is the lion's share of the $3 million deficit in the general fund, because that's our policy established by ordinance, is if we have leftover money in the general fund, it is supposed to be transferred to capital to be spent in a future year. Other significant transfers are to support the municipal court operations at 425,000, Parks and Rec at 363,000, and then we have two levy funds for the municipal police, which pay their...pay part of their wages. What we do is we transfer from general fund the rest of those wages, just so that it all gets paid out of one account and makes it easier for payroll. So, that's 345,000. Okay, on page eight, personnel. For 2026, personnel is incredibly stable, but also incredibly variable. And so, what I mean by that is the staffing levels are proposed to remain the same, 124 staff members and 99 FTEs, but health insurance premiums increased by 7.7%, which is significantly higher than we've seen in the recent past, but compared to what other cities are getting, a good deal still. And then, as mentioned previously, there is that extra pay in '26. And then what adds a little bit more variable to this is that all four of our union contracts are up for negotiation this year, and we also have the non-bargaining compensation study that has yet to be completed, and then if council chooses to make any changes based on that compensation. The budget includes a 3% wage increase, which is determined by the city's standing formula for cost-of-living adjustments tied to our income tax collections. If the compensation study or union negotiations result in significant alterations beyond that 3% increase, an appropriations amendment may be needed from city council, but any change like that would also be approved by city council. So, you'll know if that's coming. Page nine, non-capital purchases. So, with any budget, it's important to know our key cost drivers. Personnel and capital are also obvious, but are obvious key cost drivers, but there's also less obvious things in the budget that might be key cost drivers. So, this is a new page for your budget book that tries to pull together all the non-personnel and capital things that might be driving up our costs. So, anything, any single item that is over $20,000 is shown to you on this page. The largest by far is our contract with the Chardon Fire Department at 1.42 million. But other key things that I want to point out to you are energy costs. We're experiencing the same sort of price pressures with our constituents. We have various key software-as-a-services that I mentioned previously. And then, we are very proud to be Ohio's snowiest city, but that means we spend a lot on salt and brine. All right, the next three pages, 10 to 12, detail the city's capital improvement plan. The first page, page 10, is the city's full CIP outlook, which covers a 10-year time horizon. The first five years of that CIP are the balanced years. So, every project in those first five years, sources of funds have been identified, and it should be balanced across five years. The second five years are continuing or long-term obligations or annual recurring things that we know are coming, but perhaps we haven't fully identified the funding for, or they might be wishless projects. More than 50% of our planned capital spending over the next decade goes towards our streets and traffic, and those projects are what account for the spikes you see in '26, '28, '23, and '25. In total, we currently have 87 known projects for the next decade that total an estimated 48 million, and the key projects for 2026 will be covered in more detail as we go through each department's budgets this evening. Pages 13 and 14, debt schedule. 13 and 14 are a smaller selection from the larger CIP covered on the first three pages that focuses on the city's debt obligations for you. Currently, we have $16.7 million in outstanding debt obligations, but approximately $6 million of that is debt we owe to ourselves. Our sewer fund owes it to our general fund. As you can see, our annual debt load decreases significantly over the next decade, giving the city the opportunity to reinvest in our infrastructure. Noticeably, the service garage, the east side sewer, and the water treatment plant are all large debts that roll off in the next decade. I will pause here for questions before I go into the departments. All right. The rest of the budget is each department. Each department in your book has a two-page spread. The left page is the narrative summary, the expenses by classification, and the budget history for the department. On the right page is specific significant line items, and what we mean by that is anything over $5,000 is shown on that significant line items page. So, starting with police on 15 and 16, for 2026, their budget has a moderate increase, which is driven largely by personnel costs, which is by far and away their greatest expense category. Policing is, by its nature, personnel-intensive. Other notable expenses for 2026 include replacing one patrol car, improving their CAD/IT infrastructure, mobile radio replacements, and the start of our annual recurring costs for the new license plate reader cameras. In 2026, the chief and I are also going to work on trying to improve our civil service testing procedure. We are very disheartened to see the last time we gave a test, nobody signed up, and we think perhaps that that might be tied to people don't like to physically come in and take a test anymore, and perhaps we should look at joining one of the online testers that lets people take it at any time. They may be interested in looking for a job instead of the one specific day we're giving a test for the year. That will be accompanied by taking a deeper look at staffing levels and scheduling to see if we can address some burnout and high overtime. Next, on page 17 and 18, firing EMS. As we heard tonight from the chief, firing EMS services are provided by a contract through Chardon Fire Department, and so therefore contracted services, largest expense, 80% of that budget category. That contract is funded by a special property tax levy and our EMS billing collections. The 2026 budget, you'll notice, is down significantly. That's because we didn't buy a fire truck this year, but we did last year. Pages 19 to 20, street traffic storm sewer. Street department budget for '26, just like '25, is significantly higher than typical because we have a large capital outlay for that department this year. That's 42% of that department next year. Major capital projects include $360,000 in residential paving, which, as Doug touched on earlier, is a new higher amount as authorized by council. The citywide traffic signal and the North Street resurfacing projects are those two ODOT let projects that we have to pay upfront, but will be built in 2027. We have putting in the new traffic signal at North Street, and we have design work for the Wilson Mills Park Realignment Project. I just want to note on the significant line item sheet that any item related to shade trees or sidewalk are funded by our special property tax assessments. And a significant portion of the remainder of the general operating costs are funded by state gas taxes for that department. Pages 21 to 22 is the municipal cemetery, which is funded partially by user fees, but it also typically gets a general fund transfer. In 2026, we are not expecting to have a transfer from the general fund because we had lower-than-expected spending in '25 due to the lack of a sexton for a significant portion of the year. In 2026, the budget is also increased because the mausoleum roof will be replaced, which, for the scale of the cemetery's budget, is almost 33% increase in their annual budget. In March, as we touched on earlier, we'll be bringing some simplified cemetery rules for your consideration that were cut for time tonight. Pages 23 to 24, Parks and Recreation is primarily funded by income tax, but it also accounted for in its own fund because it does bring in some revenue from recreation programs. The 2026 Parks budget is a significant increase from 2025 due to the large Pocket Park project, as discussed earlier this evening, and other capital projects, including over $80,000 in needed repairs for the municipal pool to replace the heater and provide functional diving blocks for our very popular swim team. As discussed with the revenue, 2026 recreation fees, including the pool, are being increased in an effort to make the recreation department more self-sustaining. Pages 25 to 26, lands and buildings. Lands and Buildings takes care of five municipal facilities for us, and facility rents from those facilities help fund some of this department. In 2026, we budgeted to receive approximately $200,000 in rent. The department's 2026 budget sees an increase from the past few years, driven largely by capital needs at Old Village Hall and 106 Water Street. Notable changes from the CIP you originally approved both last year and with the December budget is that 111 South Street's furnace unit died in January and needed to be replaced, and the RTUs for the fire station also died in January, and they were originally going to be replaced in '27, but obviously needed to be replaced this year. We will be using the NOPEC grant that you all have on your agenda later this evening to help with the cost of those RTUs. And then finally, the department is requesting an additional $40,000 above what was originally requested for the roof shake replacement at 106, and that will be to get a higher-quality composite material instead of asphalt shingles. Not only will it last longer, but it will better match the historic district, and it was recommended by the city architect when reviewing that project. Other major expenses include building electricity, a skid loader, parking lot maintenance, and replacing a lawnmower. 27 to 28, zoning and development. In '25, their budget was lower than anticipated due to staff turnover. In '26, staffing is fully restored, but their budget did see a bump because we moved the retail strategies contract from the manager's department to zoning and development, because this is the department that actually administers that contract. Pages 29 to 30, the municipal court. As the seat of Geauga County's only municipal court, Chardon is responsible for its financial services and budgeting. Similar to police, the court's costs are predominantly personnel, and so the increases they see in '26 are driven by our anticipated personnel increases in the 27th pay. The court also added a position partway through 2025, which will continue for the entire year in 2026. Other notable costs are their required mailings. As a municipal court, they're required to mail an awful lot of things, and the United States Postal Service likes to keep increasing their postage. Monitoring programs, but those are all funded by special fees, and then the software that keeps the court running smoothly. Pages 31 to 32, our administration and council. Council and administration see a significant decrease from 2025. This is because we had large projects in '25 that weren't repeated in '26, including the manager transition, the compensation study, and Phase 1 of the Pocket Park was paid out of the manager's budget. 2026's budget was further reduced by relocating the retail strategies contract, as I just touched on. 33 to 34 is the finance department. We see a modest increase due to their personnel. Other items of note include their financial and timekeeping softwares. Pages 35 to 36, general government is our catch-all category for city operations that are not tied to a specific department. That includes things like our legal expenses, IT security, financial transaction fees, anything that provides a service for all of the departments. By far, the largest expense here is the intra-fund transfers from the general fund to other departments. And then, the second is the city's general obligation debt, which is also considered a general government expense. And then, our last two departments, pages 37 to 40, are our two utilities, water and sanitary sewer. These are enterprise funds, so they're not funded by taxes. They're funded by user fees. The city's current rate structures for both of these utilities are set through 2026, so they will need to be reevaluated here in the very near future. For the water department and the sewer department, they've both been dealing with rising energy and chemical costs. However, we have been happy to see chemical costs are becoming a little more stabilized. Major items include a new steel impeller at the water plant, replacing four vehicles, rehabilitating Water Well 4, backup pumps for the sewer system, aerators for the sewer system. And I just want to note that both systems currently carry a high debt burden. So, for water, it's 23% of expenses, and for sewer, it's 20% of expenses. But for water, most, the largest chunk of that debt will roll off in 2028, freeing up capital for reinvestment, and in sewer, the largest chunk will roll off after 2026. So, starting in 2027, we'll have some freed-up capital for reinvestment in actual lines under the ground. And that is your entire budget book.
How much of the budgets for the utilities, the two utilities, are subsidized out of the general fund?
The utilities receive no funding from the general fund. So, water and sewer receive no money from our general fund. And that's in my very strong recommendation, the way it should be.
How much are we spending in total? Or, like, not specifically for IS squared, but that type of stuff?
For information technology things? Can you pull that?
Roughly.
It'd be in the general government. No, I need it from Open Go. General government, and then the account we put all the IT stuff in.
You can get them later.
IS squared is $144,000. I want to say that account line is around $300,000 total.
Is that like cyber insurance? That's all this new program or whatever for putting together the packets? What's that?
So, Civic Clerk compiles all the packets, so that we don't have to do it by hand anymore. And we were able to afford that in council's budget without a budget increase by eliminating some other contracts that weren't needed anymore for redundant IT functions.
So, what do you mean it's going to...we don't have to do it by hand anymore. What are you talking about?
So, previously, we all submitted things to Amy through email, and then she had to print every individual piece, put it together. So, now, we submit our items through an online portal. It runs it through the approval process to make sure that me and Ben C. have seen it and approved it. and approved it. And then it compiles all of those attachments into one PDF for the clerk. And then it also creates the agenda so that she doesn't have to hand-type the agenda.
If someone wanted to look at their packet on their computer, they could. It's another benefit.
It's been around for two years. I'm sure.
Yeah.
As long as you're on page thirty-six, under Community Events, do we have anything budgeted for the 250th anniversary? It seems, it seems pretty light.
I do believe that America 250 has its own budget line, but it was less than the five thousand dollar threshold to appear in the printed package.
Do you know any specifics? Probably for the fireworks this year? Is there?
Three thousand is what.
What did we do last year?
Three thousand.
Do you know? Probably don't. Are they trying to do something a little bigger and grander because of the 250?
They are, and my last conversation with Becky is that they have access to funding through the America 250 Committee for the bigger, grander, more exciting.
I have a comment in regards to the entire budget book whenever we're done asking questions about specific. Go ahead, Dave. Okay. As you probably recall, I was most critical of the group in terms of the past books. It's certainly different, but it covers all the items, I think. And we also have access, I understand, to more detail on the computer, which, you know, back in my day, we didn't have that type of thing. So, I talked to Ben today. I made, I made one or two little suggestions just to maybe clarify a few things to make it more understandable, like the colors, and he mentioned it verbally about the fun numbers that were colored. But I think the book does what it's intended to do. I appreciate the narrative, art on the left and that. So, all in all, pleased. So, I just thought I'd throw that out there and say thank you to you and the staff and the time you spent, especially on the right-hand side. I know that takes time, I know that's an effort, but I think it's important to have that there. So, anyway, I thought a job well done.
It's pretty big, Ben.
It's because I'm being negative tonight.
I agree with him, and thanks for sharing the earlier version, so we all had a chance to look at that, but it's succinct and to the point, and we know that you're always available if we have questions, whatever. But thanks for saying that, Dave. Are there any other questions for Ben and/or Mark?
I would just ask our group here, staff people, if you don't mind, Ben. I'd like to shine, let them shine, to show the public how important these people are and how much they know. Is there anything you might want to add to the cause since you showed up tonight? Nope, okay.
Thank you, Dave, for your service. We appreciate you.
I would like to add to what you did say, Dave, about the new budget book. I was very impressed. I really liked it. I love the narratives.
Vicky, would you mind coming up just, because, could you come up? Thank you.
I just wanted to add to what Dave said, and Ben, I think you did a wonderful job on the book. It was very, it was nice to read the narratives about each department. It was very well done. Thank you.
There aren't any other questions, we'll call the question.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuhah?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Lalco?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Thank you, Ben, and staff. And Dave, we need to talk right now. Okay.
Okay.
We're going to move on to legislation B. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Dumpster Bandit LLC for solid waste collection and disposal services and declaring.
Is there a motion to read this by title only one second and third time?
Second.
Discussion? Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just so council is aware, your charter does require you to read ordinances on three separate occasions, three separate days, if you're so inclined. You have customarily waived your rereading rule and allowed legislation to proceed after the first reading and then to adoption. I understand from the mayor that there's some questions about the manager's analysis that might result in more conversation than what would ordinarily occur in one meeting. And so, before you vote on waiving of the third reading, it might be appropriate now to direct your inquiries to the manager now, so you can have information based on his analysis and recommendation to you. And if there's subsequent conversation you want to have after this meeting, then you may want to vote no to waive the three-reading rule, which would result in this being placed on the agenda at the next meeting. So, I would suggest now you kick it over to the manager to let him do his thing, and then you guys can ask him questions.
Thank you. So, as you all know, we published last year and then opened in January of this year bids for the trash hauler. We were fortunate to have a very strong response, got quite a few bids, and the bids were incredibly close together. So, the bottom three bids were all less than a hundred dollars apart over the total five years of the term. But as is always the case with any public procurement, you start with the lowest costs and you verify that they meet the requirements. So, tonight, I am going to recommend that Dumpster Bandit is the lowest and best because they were the lowest monetary cost in the bid. They proposed no changes to our standard bid language in the bid packet. Every other bidder had at least one objection or alteration. In a sort of unique situation, their price for the first five-year term is stable, so it does not change for the full five years, so our residents would know what their price is for the full five years. And they did provide the required two option years, which the next lowest bidder did not provide quotes for the two lowest option years, despite that being a bid requirement. Dumpster Bandit is a smaller local company. They are just outside the city limits. I did call all of their references, so every single public contract they currently hold. All of them switched to Dumpster Bandit from a previous hauler. All three said that the switch was seamless and that the residents did not experience any delayed pickup or any issues with, you know, containers not showing up. And then I also called, they have a large public contract that isn't quite the same as ours with Geoghan County for the Geoghan County Fair. I did contact the county and ask them how their experience had been with Dumpster Bandit, and the county similarly gave high marks to Dumpster Bandit. So, at this time, I can find no reason why Dumpster Bandit would be unqualified to perform the contract, and so as the lowest monetary price and with no reason disqualifying them from providing service, they're my recommendation for contract award.
So, Ben, when somebody makes a bid award recommendation, usually that individual has also done research, and this is, I'm thinking typically of infrastructure projects with contractors, about the contractor's ability, having the capital and equipment to actually carry through the contract. Having a low price is one thing, having the ability to fulfill the terms of the contract within the timeframes that are required is something else, and that's usually enters into the analysis sometimes. Duncan can tell you more about that. So, I'm wondering, what was your research as part of your bid analysis for this?
So, Doug? Dumpster Bandit did admit in their bid packet that they would have to acquire new vehicles to be able to service us, which was, did give me a moment of pause. And I did some research into lead time on these types of vehicles, and if the contract is awarded, given that the service date doesn't actually start until later this summer, I feel confident that they'll have sufficient time to procure those vehicles. And then they did provide with their bid packet, as was required, a bid bond and evidence of insurance, and they would be required to provide a performance bond should a contract be awarded.
In the bid documents, I have to note that the bid documents were not reviewed by council. They were not, they did not come to a council committee. We never had a chance to look at them before it went out to bid.
You mean the specifications?
Those are the bid specifications, bid documents. So, my question then is, was there a performance time period, say that all of the pickup has to be done within a certain time period in one day, for example? What were the performance, what was the performance criteria that was, that was in the bid package?
So, similar to our existing contract with our current hauler, all pickups for the entire city must be completed in one day. But our current contract doesn't state a number of hours that must occur in, and I didn't add a number of hours that must occur in, too.
Were there any specifics about trash, our one-day special trash day?
Doing trash day is a requirement of the bid packet. People were required to submit for that. Several of the alternates that were submitted, the alternateness of them was people wanting to avoid having that big trash day in one way or another, but this base bid from Dumpster Bandit does include trash day.
A single trash day?
Correct.
Did the bid specs allow, and I brought this up, tracked those up three years ago, whatever it was, I can't remember. Does anybody give recycling an option, that somebody could choose not to recycle and not get charged?
So, we required all the bidders to submit recycling and trash as separate lines, and we do, under the terms of our current contract and the proposed bid specs, allow people to opt out of recycling.
Do you still charge them?
Currently, trying to find it here, about fourteen percent of customers opt out of recycling.
But they're still charged?
The full price.
I believe so, yes. And all of the bids from our current vendor maintained that billing structure.
Is that what we required, or is that what they chose to do? Not just Dumpster Bandit, anybody?
I would have to look at each specific one to see what each specific, I don't remember specifically to each bid.
Okay. Well, I objected how many ever years ago to that. I still do. I don't think it's right that we mandate recycling and charge people if they choose not to. I think it should be a choice. I'd say that regardless of what firm, I'm not reading specific, I'm just saying in general. So, I still stand beside that position, and I know no one else supported that a number of years ago, so I'm probably still out there on my own, and that's fine. But, okay. So, if somebody wanted just bag service, can they also get a recycling cart? I know how it is.
I did not, in my understanding of both our current contract and the bid specs, I did not contemplate someone getting bag service but also wanting a recycling tote?
Well, I could tell you one household that does that, and it's mine, until recently. But we decided to go to the full-size cart, but it worked out great. I mean, especially for households with, you know, a couple of individuals, most of the material generated, if you do any kind of composting, is recyclable, and as it was, we, you know, we could get along fine with a bag service. And I'm glad that that's still being offered for people that want to do that. But I don't know, I don't recall how it worked, but we did have a recycling cart, even though we were just on bag service.
It was not my intent to change any of the current process. So, the contract that was in the bid specs very closely mirrors the current contract with our current hauler.
So, I, I would like further, more information on, my assumption would be that Dumpster Bandit has enough trucks and equipment for the customers they service right now. How many households estimate, that we would estimate that they would be adding in from the city of Chardon and needing the equipment, knowing that there is a long lead time on big trucks, police cars, what have you? I, I am, I do, I am concerned that there's, it's the equipment in the trucks. Like you said, you did online research, but that doesn't mean that that's actually a deliverable. Like, how many, how much more equipment? And I know I can't, and I'm not looking over there, but I'm just curious, like, how many more trucks would they need to add into their fleet to be able to service the community? What really is the realistic lead time for those being acquired and on-site? It would be all new cans for the entire community, and like, is that, have they already, you know, is, that's another, you know, something? So, I, candidly, I'm not totally satisfied with that answer, that they'll have them without more information on that. Not to say that they won't, I'm just saying, like, I don't see, I'm a little concerned about that. What is our date, if we were to transfer services over to a new vendor?
June.
Okay, so, that's not very long of a lead time to get new equipment like that. I'm interested to know about, because all the customers who have a current account with our current vendor, Waste Management, they would all be required to switch over to a new account. Does the Dumpster Bandit have all the same type of online tools and portals and things that people would need to make it easy for them to do that?
They did, including their bid packet, they do have online bill payment.
Do they do all the same kind of services with regards to notifications or things? I did go on and look at them, they, they do a very good job of, on their Facebook page of making notifications, but somebody does, you know, all that kind of stuff. Is it, I guess what I'm asking is, on the customer service end, did you feel like they're comparable, very comparable, or the same level of service?
They met all of the required bidding specifications.
Okay.
See, that's where I'm also wondering, like, what Andy said earlier, like, we didn't see the bid specifications. So, when we try to ask these questions, like, there's so many of them that I think are not answered, or maybe you can't, or maybe if we saw the specifications, we'd be able to have those answered already, so.
Or maybe some of them weren't included, not because they just weren't. They might not have been included. I don't know. It's a mystery.
So, we have a little over seventeen hundred customers. I think we have to set aside the new can issue, because if we're ever going to switch people.
I'm not worried, I'm not, I get it. I'm not, I'm not overly concerned. What I am saying is, and I like the idea of supporting local, I like all that, I'm just saying that seventeen hundred customers is how many new trucks needed to service those customers at the same level that they're getting right now? And is it realistic that all the equipment that's needed to do that, trucks, cans, whatever, would be ready to go this summer?
So, according to them, in their bid specifications, they need two to three new vehicles, and they are confident they can procure them within the timeframe.
Do the bid requirements have any reference to safety protocol and procedures and training of employees?
We have nothing to that effect in our current contract, nor did we, other than a general statement of, you know, the employees of the contractor shall be other than a general statement of, you know, the employees of the contractor shall behave in a workmanlike manner while providing service to the community.
Don't hit people.
Yeah.
Where would the bags be able to be purchased from?
For bag service?
Yes.
If I remember their bid specifications correctly, I admit I didn't anticipate that question this evening. I believe their offices, which are quite literally just outside City Line.
Because I thought at one time Giant Eagle.
It's true, you could buy them at the grocery store previously.
But I didn't know if they still did, because we haven't had bag service in a couple of years. Also, does Dumpster Bandit offer a senior discount?
The senior discount is required by our contract specification.
So it's one, two?
Hey. She always gets.
Do you need to recuse yourselves? I, I want to say that I don't, I don't feel like I feel confident making a decision on this tonight. So what's our recourse here, Ben?
So.
Or Mayor, what can, what can we do?
Your charter says you have to read every ordinance on three different days. You can waive the three readings and enact at a particular meeting if five of seven members of council vote in favor of waiving the three-reading rule.
So in between this meeting and the next meeting, if we say that we're not going to waive that, that means that we can get, sorry? Did I say it wrong?
No, you didn't say anything wrong.
Well, these questions that we want more information on, how do we get that? Since we're not allowed to ask.
Depends on what, which questions you're talking about. I mean, the manager's come to you with his recommendation based on the information that he thinks is pertinent. This conversation you're having is providing him with information that you think is pertinent. Is, if you're, if you're not inclined to move forward because you don't have the information necessary, then it becomes a question of, does the information that you need, is it going to be provided? And can it be provided consistent with the bid solicitation? Some of the stuff you're looking for may not be something that is proper for a bid solicitation. If the concept of, well, how do we know that they're going to find this vehicle, or multiple vehicles? You know, it, it can't be based on vibes, you know? You've got to have hard documents and hard information that you're looking for.
Right.
And so to the extent that you're asking the manager for concrete information he can provide you based on his review of available specifications and his investigation, investigation of the bids received, then if you want that time, then you simply vote no to the motion that's on the table, or before you now, it's on the table, sorry. That, if, if less than five people vote in the affirmative to waive the three-reading rule, then it cannot pass tonight, it's just read and you move on to the next item on the agenda, and it'll be read a second time at the next council meeting.
And we can read it two and three, second and third time at the next meeting.
And if we do that, we'll guarantee you it won't have any garbage trucks in June.
I think that's, I think the legal term for that is a pickle.
Oh, you can't, you can't, you can't. Right, he can't do, no, I'm saying, like, he can't, he can't speak on this cannon.
People are entitled to speak at meetings. The question is, are they speaking about something that's pertinent to what's before you? And is it going to cause you to make a decision? Or lead someone else to believe that you're making a decision that's not based on the fair solicitation process that we've undertaken to date?
Not to be excruciating, but so what you're, so what you're saying is, so my specific question about, they say they can get the trucks, and I'm like, well, I'm not, I don't, I don't feel confident because I don't have any more information about it, right? Or I'm concerned that they can't meet that obligation. But because it wasn't part of, besides, they've, they've said in their bid that they can do it. So am I allowed, so is Ben allowed to go and investigate that further and talk to them and get that information? Is that part, or is that, like, going against the official process?
I mean, look, there's, there's art and science to it all.
Oh, my gosh.
A little bit of both. You know, manager's in a tough position because he's, this is a, you know, a complicated five-year contract. And he's weighed the factors he thinks are most important and provided you with his summary and assessment based on what he thinks is most important. You've provided him with information that you want to hear about. Some of that he can investigate further and provide you with a response.
Okay.
Some of it, it might not be proper for him to provide you with a response. I, I don't want to shoot out from the hip on every piece of every nuance of this. But I can say that if you have questions you want answered, one, to the extent that were pertinent for the whole council to hear, you have to have that conversation in a public meeting.
Okay.
But it has to take place the next council meeting if you're not going to get it tonight. And if it's got to take place the next council meeting, then you would need to vote no on the question before you, which is, are you waiving the three-reading rule?
I guess I would also like to retouch on a specific item that perhaps Ben might elaborate on as well, is that in the bid specifications, we required prices for years six and seven. And during the bid process, one of the officially submitted questions was, do I have to give a number for years six and seven? Which we answered yes. And the second lowest bidder did not give numbers for years six and seven.
That was what you were talking about when you said there's objection or alteration? Is that what you meant, like, they didn't?
They didn't list it under their alterations, they just did not provide numbers. And so I guess I have a concern that it is therefore a bid potentially not compliant with the required submission.
Is that it?
Well, I'm not rendering any legal opinion on anything in an open meeting, I can promise you that.
Hypothetically?
No hypotheticals.
So you're saying that that was part of your, your recommendation was you felt that the second lowest bidder did not complete the application?
As fully as the lowest bidder.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be typically, that would be considered a non-responsive bid? If you had items in there that were not specifically addressed in the bid document? It was.
I'd love to ask.
There's some notes here from the manager's piece. The notes for the lowest bidder, I believe, says no exceptions or modifications. And the next lowest says no option years and no bag service. Again, not rendering any legal opinions, but what he's advised you of.
There is no altering the bid standards at this point.
By bid standards, you mean by the criteria by which the manager made his report?
Correct.
No, no, the, the, look, the public and every interested bidder is entitled to play on the same field. We can't move the first base 20 feet closer now.
You'd have to reject all bids. And revise your bid specifications and rebid.
Well, I, somebody had a hand up back there.
Yeah.
You want to say something?
You need to come up to, you can come up to the.
I don't love this concept of having.
He's one of the bidders, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, we can, we can.
I have to publicly answer your questions, that's all I'm saying.
Well, so I'm gonna, okay, so let me ask you this. So you're saying, right, if we go to three, we're going to be two more months down the road, and that may not give them enough time if we decided to go with Dumpster Bandit to get the equipment they need for June, correct? That was your point you made earlier?
That's my belief, I don't know that. So the question should be addressed, if we were allowed, if the law director allows us to address that question, to the apparent low bidder.
Well, I mean, yeah. Is that the only, is that the only objection? Because here, because, because for the five-year total, it's not a big difference in money. And it is a big, it is asking a lot of people to make a change and to do something different, right? So if we're going to make the change, we got to feel 100% confident in it. And then also, if the second lowest bidder didn't fill out the bid properly, then according to what, you know, that.
Not the law director.
I know. Well, apparently, I could probably get more opinions from you, but the opinions, then that in a normal, in another type of area would be rejected because it wasn't done correctly. Is that correct? Yes?
Oh, I'm not saying anything yes or no.
Well, this is super.
So I, my experience in bidding, and I bid projects for more than 30 years, was that if I had bid alternates and the contractor did not, and if it said specifically in the bid documents, to be considered responsive, you must respond to all items on the bid form. If they did not fill out those bid alternates, the bid was rejected. End of story. I didn't even put it in the bid tab. To send them a letter saying, you didn't, you didn't respond to this, your bid is considered non-responsive. Now, they could take legal action if they wanted to, it never happened, but.
All the people who.
I agree.
So everybody else who filled out an application, or like, or a bid, they all, they all did it. They all filled that section out, there was just one.
But was there language in the contract documents that said, to be considered responsive, you must fill out, you must respond to all items in the bid, in the bid form?
Yes, and it was a specifically asked question for clarification that was answered in the supplemental addenda.
That's pretty clear. Are there any other comments or questions? So Ben, restate the.
So we are at the point where you guys typically decide whether you're going to waive the three-reading rule. There's a motion and a second to waive it. If you vote in the affirmative to waive the three-reading rule, and five of you make that vote, then it would proceed to a vote on the ordinance itself. If less than five of you say yes, let's waive the three-reading rule, then it has to be read next month. And then you may have to go through this song and dance again, or not.
Is any, any information gathered in the meantime, is that even admissible?
I would say anything that the, the manager wants to pursue further in response arguably could be. I'd be reluctant to say he should be going back and forth on items not covered in the bid documents, though.
But we could do the second and third reading next month.
Sure, you could waive just the third reading.
So it doesn't have to go three separate.
No, you could, you would have the same, again, the motion would just be to waive the third reading as opposed to the second and third reading.
So we are at, right now, we're still in discussion.
Over the second, a waiver of the second and third reading.
I'm not sure what information we're going to, we're going to get in another month that could be considered. If it was in, you know, if everybody has complied with the bid documents, he has a bid bond. If the contractor fails to perform and, once a contract is signed, then we have other recourse. We're going to be in a pickle, literally. Maybe rotten pickles out on the curb side if we don't get the garbage picked up.
And that is one of the reasons why, both in the current contract and in the current draft contract, there is a clause that the city may terminate for any reason or no reason at all at the will of the city.
Yeah, nonperformance in the state specified would be reason for termination, potentially.
I do believe that Andy's correct, that another month is not going to change the information that we have presented here. We might get a little more clarification, but it's not going to change.
Specific, right, the bid specs won't change?
It's a tough one, but, okay.
So on the question of waiving the second and third read, I believe the obligation is now on the clerk to call a roll.
Yeah, but once again, if we, yeses are going to.
Yes means it's going to move on to the adoption of the ordinance. No means you got to read it two more times.
Okay, no means we'll be back next month.
So go ahead and read it.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
No. I'm not.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
All right.
That was six?
Happens.
Okay, six it is. So now you got, now you move on to the adoption.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3340, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Dumpster Bandit LLC for solid waste collection and dump disposal services and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3340, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Dumpster Bandit LLC for solid waste collection and disposal services and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance 33-40? Move and second it, further discussion?
Taking a leap of faith.
A big one.
Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Ms. Means?
Ben, can I ask, oh, am I allowed to ask a question? What?
In the middle of a roll call.
All right, so that's a, no, I can't ask a question.
Still have to vote, though.
I know, I did.
Oh, sorry.
Did you vote? No, I'm still thinking. Yes.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
All right, moving on to legislation C. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Mountain Road Cycles LLC and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time? Move and second it, further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3341, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Mountain Road Cycles LLC and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3341, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Mountain Road Cycles LLC and declaring an emergency.
Looking for the adoption of ordinance 33-41. Move and second it, further discussion?
Me, Ben, yes.
You, Ben.
So Mountain Road Cycles is a long-term tenant. They've been there since before the building was owned by the city. They are current, on their current lease, they would like to renew. We'd like to keep you. It's a good store over there. Do a nice job.
Are there any questions for Ben? Call the question, please.
Mr. Laoco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Legislation D. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council NOPEC 2026 energized community grant funds and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time? Move and second it, further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoco?
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3342, an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council NOPEC 2026 energized community grant funds and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3342, an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council NOPEC 2026 energized community grant funds and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance 33-42?
Remove.
Move and second it, further discussion?
I'm sorry.
That's right, the NOPEC grant.
The NOPEC grant? Yeah, so we're going to use those for the R2Us. It's a reoccurring grant every year that we get as, as a rebate to the city. So we will be soliciting quotes for the R2Us at the fire department.
Pardon my ignorance, what is the?
Pardon my ignorance, what is an RTU?
I'm sorry, rooftop unit. So when you're driving by and you see the HVAC on top of the roof.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Justin or RTU? Call the question, please.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Legislation E, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into all necessary easement agreements for the installation and maintenance of sidewalks and other public improvements on the real property located at 400 Water Street and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time? Move and second it, further discussion, call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Resolution number seven dash twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into all necessary easement agreements for the installation and maintenance of sidewalks and other public improvements on the real property located at 400 Water Street and declaring an emergency. Resolution number seven dash twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into all necessary easement agreements for the installation and maintenance of sidewalks and other public improvements on the real property located at 400 Water Street and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution seven dash twenty-six? Move and second it, further discussion?
Move on this, Ben. So the plan, this is for the new development, or redevelopment, rather, of the used car lot at the corner of Water and Washington. The condition of that development set by the planning commission was that they give us an easement for the sidewalks, which are currently outside the right-of-way. This is that easement for them to comply with the requirements of the planning commission.
Are there any additional questions for Ben? Call the question, please.
Mrs. Chuha?
Wait, I'm just, just so, council's aware of this, the existing sidewalk is not within the public right-of-way. That's why we made that requirement.
Just on, just on Washington Street.
Just on Washington, only on Washington.
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco? Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Motion carries, moving on.
Real quick, how would, how could that happen?
Who is the city manager when that happens?
Doug, tell them how the city's monuments.
Before my time.
Tell them how good the monuments are in this city.
Yeah, good luck, good luck. No, actually, Washington Street is not in the center of the right-of-way.
Okay.
Over there.
That's a problem.
And just to make Andy's point, if you read the original town plat, Huntington Street in the original town plat is about thirteen hundred feet from the monument on the square. So we've pulled our hair out trying to figure that one out, too.
How many rounds was that?
Good one.
Moving on to review of expenditures.
No.
I would, I would like to thank Dan because he and I could not arrange a time when we could get together, and he did it himself, and I appreciate his efforts.
I did that, I was not feeling well and I didn't want to expose Dave to that. They were reviewed, I sent some questions to Mark, they were answered to my satisfaction, and they're in order.
Very good, thank you. Executive session, we're gonna forego that tonight. One item off till next month. And any other business to come before council? So we have firm manager's appointment to the Tax Incentive Review Council. I think there's a statement in our packet. Reference to nominating Deborah Chuha.
It's pretty exciting.
I'll make that motion to.
We just did it.
Point Debbie to. Because she's the vice chair of the Economic Development Committee.
I'm also on it.
Move and second it, no, the chairman.
She's already on.
Already on it.
I needed another person. And actually, there's one more opening, but it must be a minority. So if anybody knows any residents who would like to serve, send them my way.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
No, you can vote for yourself.
I would say it's probably better to abstain.
I think it'd be interesting if you voted no.
You have a right to vote for yourself, there's nothing prohibiting you from doing so. Not vote no, though.
Any other business to come before council? If not. Move to adjourn. Second, all in favor signify by saying.
June announcement? No, never mind.
Do it.
Nope.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, likewise opposed. We are adjourned at nine oh six.